Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call please.
Trustee Paulie.
President.
Trustee Lappin.
Here.
Clerk Palavich here. Treasure Award at summer.
At.
Trustee Curl.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skitty.
Here. Moving forward to the adoption of the agenda, are there any corrections? There had been some supplemental documents that have already been updated online and in our agenda. Yeah, and then we have an addition of new number five will be F O P L C, which is the Paternal Order of Police Tentative Agreement, which is one of our two bargaining units. And then six will be. Number six will be the summit invoice for fire department. With those two additions, are there any other corrections or additions or items to be addressed? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the amended agendas presented.
So moved.
We have a motion on the table to adopt the amended agendas presented. Is there support? Or and moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the amended agenda signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. Uh, this is the first opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment in regards to any of the business on the agenda, this is the opportunity for members of in person or online. Uh, we, he's online, you're here, but this would be the opportunity for that public comment would come in the latter part of this agenda. Yes. That being said, seeing no online participants with public comment for the agenda, we'll move forward to payment of the bills. Is there a motion to make payment of the bills?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to make payment of bills. Is there support? I'll support it. Further discussion? Hearing none. Rule call please.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Trustee Curl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. Moving forward to the minutes of March eighth, twenty twenty-two, a regular meeting, March tenth, twenty twenty-two, a budget meeting workshop and March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, a special meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So make a motion or support.
Okay, well, we have a motion by trustee Lappin, support by trustee Reiner. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes of all three meetings signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose the same. Minutes have been approved. Moving forward, we have the planning commission minutes from March fourteenth. I'll entertain a motion to receive and file the minutes of the planning commission from March fourteen. We have a motion on the table by trustee Paulie. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion? Would you like to just as a liaison? Would you like to quick little, anything that happened at that meeting? That was a singular case.
Oh, that was where the.
Marshals.
Marshals, so when and we had a few little items that need to be cleaned up and also been cleaned up on paper and are moving forward. Beautiful. So marshals will be here soon as they said, as soon as they get here.
Beautiful. I've seen no old business on the agenda. We move forward to the new business. Receiving file, all those in favor of receiving and file the correspondence signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose the same. I appreciate that. Moving forward to new business, Kevin, if you'd like to take the podium, that way you can kind of discuss the building permit fees. Mike, you are just, this is a background of what you and Lynn worked on.
Me and Lynn have looked at the last time the building commissioner actually looked at the financial. That was done, I believe, seven years ago. So nothing has been moved up or changed in seven years to where, you know, they should be looked at every other year minimum. So we looked at it this time. So we went from five dollars a thousand to seven dollars a thousand, which is a two dollar gain. And that'll start us, I believe, going in the right direction for future instead of all of a sudden, oh wait, we don't have anything in our budget for this or that. Uh, just proactively trying to get ahead of stuff that may come down the road.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and that's pretty much the template of discussion for the next three items of business. But if there's any site specific questions to the fee structure for the building department, Kevin is here to answer them. Otherwise, I've entertained a motion to look at establishing the resolution for the building permit fee schedule of fees, whereas the charter township of Alpena Board of Trustees through the charter township of Alpena Building Official has adopted and enforces a building code and whereas the township is authorized to establish building permit fees in order to defray the expenses related to abiding by and enforcing the building code. Now therefore, be it resolved that the charter township of Alpena establishes the building permit fees as set forth in the attached document and be it further resolved that further changes to such fees shall be accomplished through the adoption of further resolutions of the township board of trustees. Is there a motion to move forward with the resolution as previously stated?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with the schedule of fees resolution. Their support?
I'll support it.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion?
I have a question. So by voting yes, are we adopting this fee schedule that was in our packet?
Yes.
Okay.
I did change one thing. I made a flat rate for a single door to be changed out of the house because the doors are like one hundred and fifty hours and our permit would be one hundred and fifteen. So, you know, a fifty dollar flat rate for that is more than substantial for what we do.
Thank you very much for the clarification. We have a motion and support. Further discussion or questions? Well, Kevin's still here.
Can you tell me, you, it sounded as though you wanted to ratchet this up because it's been a number of years since this has been reviewed. Do you have an idea of where you'd like these to end up?
After another year or two, we'll be able to see where the building department is because, you know, the financials of it, you're already behind what it should already be at.
Is there a, is there a recommended number by other similar sized municipalities or?
Preskill does theirs in a square footage, which I don't really think works out well. City does a different method.
Okay.
We're just trying to, you know, what's gonna, what's gonna keep us sustainable to where, you know, we, we don't fall behind.
Yes, Michelle.
So currently we have a fees, but the general fund is still supplementing the building department.
It has historically, well, act, I believe it's Public Act one ninety-nine, set forth that building departments should be a self-sustaining, basically, item of revenue versus expenditure. So we're trying to get to that.
Where we break even.
Break even.
I mean, it changes yearly by how many permissions you bring in.
Sure.
So, you know, maybe this will be good enough, maybe in a year, that's guaranteed following year, you'll have to revisit it and say, okay, now we, you gotta find some kind of template to go to.
Yeah. So there wouldn't necessarily be a, a cap per se. So if somebody built a three hundred thousand dollar home versus a seven hundred thousand dollar home, the numbers are the numbers.
No, the numbers are the numbers. Okay. Everybody's equal.
If there's no other questions or comments, roll call please.
Just you, Reiner.
Yes.
Just you, Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Trustee Curl.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Michelle, I'll fill out this resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and the next item of business before us is also the planning commission zoning board of a P appeals fee schedule. Whereas the charter township of Alpena Board of Trustees has adopted the charter township of Alpena zoning ordinance and whereas section nine oh four, the zoning ordinance provides that the township board of trustees may from time to time establish by resolution of fee schedule for zoning related tasks and matters. Now therefore, be it resolved that the charter township of Alpena, pursuant to section nine oh four of the charter township of Alpena zoning ordinance establishes the fees for zoning related tasks and matters as set forth in the attached documents and be it further resolved that the further changes to such fees shall be accomplished through the adoption of further resolutions of the township board of trustees. Is there a motion to move forward with the resolution pertaining to the planning commission and zoning board of appeals fee schedule? We have a motion on the table to move forward with the resolution of schedule fees for the planning commission and zoning board of appeals. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion? I can take this. This is there again. This is another matter where it's been several years since any costs have been acknowledged or looked at. With the help of Michelle, I, I found a rough aggregate of cost per planning commission meeting of well over what we were charging. So this is actually getting back to a balance point. And actually, for the first time, we're actually separating commercial from residential instead of just having one fee for both. This is another mechanism to at least stop a loss. This is not to make money. This is to.
What's the increase in percentage?
So it had always been for, since I think two thousand four, two thousand seven was the last time it was four hundred dollars. And our, and our cost was per meeting is on average seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-three cents. I believe that's a change. I know it's seven hundred and thirty-three dollars.
We're going from five hundred and then a six hundred and.
So what we're, we're going from four across the board, knowing that we're losing at that rate of a fee. We know that we're losing three hundred and fifty dollars every meeting that the planning commission has. Um, this because of the amount of tasks and review that has to go into commercial. This is an opportunity because we wanted to find a comfortable threshold for residential so that they still come to the planning commission and utilize the proper mechanisms. So we're still in a position and residential planning cases of a financial, quote unquote, a financial loss. Um, but that financial loss is actually offset by the increase to commercial fees, which will actually bring it back down to a level playing field.
I'm just seeing, the only thing I've seen from my back, it's something else, is notice of appeal is five hundred dollars and special meeting six hundred, but what does that planning commission fee do?
Yeah, yeah, that so there's actually, so notice of appeal, that is for the Z B A. They're two, two different things altogether. This is just the planning commission. Um, so there's actually going to be two different fee schedules that are looked at.
Are there fewer others?
There's, yeah, the Z B A, actually, this past year was the first time the Z B A's actually heard the first meeting this year of the Z B A. They actually approved minutes from three years prior because they don't routinely have to meet. So we left that one kind of status quo because it's not an overly exercised branch of the township. Um, but with the planning commission application, like I said, this is a palatable increase for residential. Um, and it's, it's not to be a moneymaker, but we had to find a comfortable level of how much money can we lose by providing that service? Uh, and then we had also looked at and creatively looked and said, um, a commercial activity takes more time and efforts, but it can actually offset the loss of the residential at one hundred and fifty so that any cases that are heard, basically, now the planning commission is just at a, a flat line base rate.
Which is what?
Well, it would be six hundred and nine hundred, but we're not going to be losing money when we know that we have an, a regular anticipated loss of our cost to the township of seven hundred and fifty. Now, we have a motion and support. Is there any further discussion?
You are talking about this right here.
Yes, sir. Uh, rule call.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Trustee Curl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. Um, yeah, and then we'll do it in two, two different motions because the, the notice of appeal for the zoning board of appeals, um, has only increased one hundred dollars. This was also another four hundred dollar charge.
Those are different resolutions.
I actually, I think we can do both of those under the same.
No, we, we covered it with that motion too because we're talking about general, any of the attached zoning related.
I thought so. I just got confused when I started looking at it as well. So this was for the Z B A for point of clarification to the board members. This was another four hundred dollar flat fee. Um, the zoning board obviously is not a seven member panel, but the fact of the matter is when you go a decade between increases, it's bound and determined to actually have to be addressed. So this was an increase from four hundred to one hundred.
Was there a resolution page made for this or?
They're, they're combined, planning commission and the zoning board of appeals were addressed in the same resolution.
There is a resolution. If you have three resolutions, one of them is for zoning.
Yeah.
Okay, but the zoning ordinance one thirty, okay.
The ordinance one forty, yeah, covers those two bodies. Correct.
I didn't have this.
Um, then we are voted there. Okay. Moving forward with a new item, uh, number three, which is our sanitary sewer and water ordinance, ordinance one thirty-nine, schedule of rates and charges, which is an appendix to said ordinance. Uh, whereas the charter township of Alpena Board of Trustees adopted ordinance one thirty-nine, the charter township of Alpena sanitary sewer and water ordinance during its July twenty-second, twenty nineteen regular meeting. And whereas section eighteen of ordinance one thirty-nine calls for the establishment of rates and charges for the installation of connection to and use of water and sewage disposal systems for the purpose of recovering the cost of construction, reconstruction, maintenance, repair, operation, and replacement of the systems and whereas section eighteen of ordinance one thirty-nine provides that such rates and charges shall be established by the resolution of the township board of trustees. Uh, whereas the township board of trustees has previously established the rates and charges by resolution and now wishes to amend such rates and charges by the present resolution. Now therefore, be it resolved that the charter township of Alpena pursuant to section eighteen of ordinance one thirty-nine establishes the sanitary sewer and water ordinance rates and charges as set forth in the attached document titled the charter township of Alpena Department of Public Works Sanitary Sewer and Water Ordinance Schedule of Rates and Charges and be it further resolved that the further changes to such rates and charges shall be accomplished through the adoption of further resolutions of the township board of trustees. Is there a motion to move forward with the resolution for the sanitary sewer and water ordinance, a schedule of rates and charges?
I'll make that motion.
A motion on the table to move forward with the schedule of rates and charges.
Support.
And supported. Uh, for their discussion?
So the rates went up a percentage?
Yeah. It did. This is, I, everything that's on this whole fee schedule, Kath and I went through to look at norms of practice within communities that have municipal systems. Um, everything's on par there. And so moving forward, this is a comprehensive from water usage rate, rates all the way down to meter taps, et cetera, have been addressed accordingly to be effective April one.
I think what most people will focus on is that, is the, the minimum quarterly bill and that's now one sixty-one, forty-one, and it was.
One fifty-seven.
Yeah.
Thirty-four. Um, and that will be a supplemental conversation that I think that we should have coming into this fiscal is how do we look at those rates and how do we look at billing for said rates? Um, a good deal of conversation that has taken place as we're at a minimum usage of seven thousand gallons per quarter. Um, but maybe that isn't the best way forward. Um, and maybe the potential utilization of a scenario similar to that of the city system of a ready to serve charge to have a baseline revenue stream that's constant even for seasonal users of the system and then actually have a mechanism where they're actually discharged for the water they consume, which is an argument that we've been hearing for, for five years plus of why do I have to pay for seven? I'll just turn on my hose and let, but then unfortunately they forgot that they turned on the hose and then we're still having a different conversation altogether. Um, so, but that would be a conversation that will be forthcoming in this fiscal. Um, if there's any further discussion on the fee schedule for our ordinance one thirty-nine? If not, roll call, roll please.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Trustee Curl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. Hey, moving forward, we have another round and actually slightly.
This is our final round of budget adjustments for this fiscal year.
Now, we're in hopes, final. We only have a handful of days left in this fiscal, so, um, I've entertained a motion to move forward with the budget adjustments as presented. A move, we have a motion on the table to move forward with the budget adjustments. Is there support?
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call vote.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Trustee Curl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yeah.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. Uh, moving forward to the two newest business items, the F O P L C tentative agreement. Uh, it would be as one member, if not the other members of the personnel committee, if they want to speak up. We have worked through contract negotiations with the bargaining unit of F O P L C. We had tied up the last remaining concern and it is, I believe they've already signed or not.
No.
So, yeah, we don't have to ratify.
Yeah.
Um, so it'd be at least our recommendation when I speak, I believe on behalf of the personnel committee to vote to ratify this T A, moving, this is a one-year contract for our office personnel. Um, that includes a three percent raise and a lot of the work that was done was really actually quite a bit of disclarification with Ms. Mills guidance. Um, so it'd be, I believe, our recommendation and if you, either of you would like to tell me that.
No, it was very comprehensive. We had a lot of language issues that needed to be brought up to the current standard. So I think we got a lot done in this whole section, so.
And we have a, an opportunity to take this tentative agreement and take it out one year, which our other bargaining unit and I A F F are also under a one-year contract. So it'd be, I, I guess I'd entertain a motion to move forward.
So it takes us to what point in time?
This will take us to what, April one, twenty twenty?
It'll get us to the next.
Twenty-three?
Yeah.
And are you recommending it?
I, at this point in time, it is the recommendation of the personnel committee to move forward with ratifying the tentative agreement before it.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to move forward and ratify the tentative agreement with F O P L C. Is there support? I'll support it. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, roll call please.
Trustee Curl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. The last, um, new business is an invoice from Summit. Uh, this is for testing on the, on the, I gave him a copy. It's the hydro testing of S C B A cylinders. This had to come back because of a unknown calculation that included a truck charge of forty-four dollars. Um, there is a recommendation from Chief Hanson to move forward with payment of five hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy cents to be taken out of G L two oh five, three, three, six, seven, two, seven, point zero, two, zero. Uh, I'd entertain a motion to, that follows that recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
So we have a motion on the table. We have a motion by trustee Lappin, support by trustee Paulie to move forward with the recommendation to pay the invoice utilizing two oh five, three, three, six, seven, two, seven, point zero, two, zero. Uh, further discussion?
Only, which fiscal year are we going to?
This is for out of this current.
Current fiscal year.
And now.
Budget allows it.
One of the budget adjustments.
One, one, five, one, five, one, five, one, five dollar budget adjustment covered this expenditure.
Not forty-four dollars, five dollars.
No, it was five and that was rounded up. So.
So did anybody even ask, what is a truck charge? I mean, what is that all?
Transport, because what we had actually had to do is because we weren't afforded the ability to take our whole battery of bottles and have them tested at once, they would grab two, test them, come back. That way, we always had in the instance, if we had a fire scenario, we weren't left with, without a bottle for our backs.
Definitely.
Yeah, on that note, uh, roll call please.
Trustee Curl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. Yeah, I would love for you to.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing confidential settlement negotiations with the township attorney and the pending litigation involving the city of Alpena water sewer rates.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support or it's been moved and supported? Further discussion? Roll call please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Trustee Curl.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. We are now officially in closed session. It should not take too long. We will.
Okay, so we are officially back in open session. This is the second opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment in person, please stand at the podium and state only your name for the record.
All right.
Um, we do have some participants online as well. We have, uh, Ms. Wolf and then also Mr. Clark.
Oh, Bob Young, resident of Alpena Township, resident of Preskill Township, Hank, and the business in Alpena Township. Larry Clark, are you on?
Yes, he is.
Is he? He is, all right. So really Larry has, probably knowing Larry, has everything said. I'm just referring back to prior notes about support of U S twenty-three South Corridor and hoping that Alpena Township will see fit in the upcoming budget when you have appropriations sufficient to cover this type of thing. I understand you've got a lot of bills to pay, a lot of things you need to do, uh, but we're just looking for support in our corridor. In years past, it's varied from three to five thousand dollars. Uh, if you can see fit to do that as you did in the past, we'd appreciate it. Uh, I know there's some nominal fees like five hundred dollars or so for generalized cleanup where the merchants and businesses in our area do the same. So in kind, we do that. And I, I empathize totally with what you have to go through, uh, but at the time where you can put this in and support us, uh, I would appreciate it. And Larry will probably follow uh, and talk about the more specifics in his own inimitable way. So having said that, I would appreciate you supporting.
Hello, can you hear me? It's Larry. Hello, Nathan. Hello, trustees. How are you this evening? Well, first I'd like to thank, thank the board for working with us these many years and also here recently, Russ and Nathan and I have had a few meetings about the bike path extension. And as you know, I sent you a letter on March eighteenth outlining what we think the expenses might be in this coming budget year for two things. First of all, the bike path extension, which I'll speak to first. And then as Bob alluded to, also the South Bay cleanup, the eleventh annual South Bay cleanup. But the bike path extension, um, we have, now have a design plan that will. But, uh, the bike path extension, um, we have, uh, now have a design plan that will encompass only. Uh, disturbing, uh, point three, three, less than point three, three acres. A one-third acre, which will, uh, make Eagle happy because it won't require wetland mitigation. And I think it was certainly a concern of the, uh, township as well. The, uh, the path is still through the M dot right away. Uh, it is not under the power lines, but, uh. Rather, uh, between the power lines and the road shoulder. No boardwalks or bridges, just, uh, for maintenance or future maintenance concerns, uh, just, uh, asphalt culverts. The next step on this, uh, project is agreed to and discussed by Nathan and I and Russ. Uh, is to issue a letter to the property owners, uh, between Island Drive and South Partridge Point Road. Nathan wanted to include, uh, both residents and property business owners on both sides. We have that list complete. And we're ready to send that out, uh, as soon as, uh, we can connect with Nathan and get a date for a, the meeting itself. A public input session at the township, which Nathan indicated probably April, May. So future costs after that, if that goes well, uh, would include, um. A meeting at large with township residents. At the, at the township and, uh, that will, of course, will be the costs associated with that for, uh, newspaper ads and. Mailings and postage and so on and so forth. Uh, permits and grant applications as well, as we hope to, if we can get that far in the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget year. Now regarding the cleanup, uh, the eleventh annual, the, uh, the expenses outlined there would be for hand tools. But there'll be a bigger expenditure this year for flower pots, the flower pots that, uh, the Plowman family's been putting out, uh, are getting quite, uh, broken. And deteriorated for being out in the sun all summer. So again, thank you for, uh, working with us with, to improve South Bay and right now we're just focusing on the, uh, bike path extension.
Thank you for your comments, Larry. I'll send you my notes to the letter tomorrow.
Thank you, Nathan.
Ms. Wolf, do you have comment? Or are you just giving a beautiful wave? You're muted, Ms. Wolf. Okay. Okay.
Katie, I've done mute yourself.
There you are. You should be unmuted.
Sorry, it said that the host needed to unmute me.
Okay, Ms. Wolf.
But, uh, I, I wanted to just.
I think your microphone's got a problem.
Yeah, we, we have some technical difficulties with your, uh, your end, Ms. Wolf. We get a. Only partial auto, audio from you.
No.
But you're good right now, so just keep the beautiful bean footage rolling.
Okay, maybe I'll talk slower than some. I serve on the board for South Bay and my name is Katie Wolf. And following up to the earlier comment, I just wanted to emphasize how. Stretch of the coastline in Michigan's lower peninsula is one of the biggest gaps in the entire state. And I would think that we would want to be connected with the rest of the state and so to me this bike path. Not only enables a safe, healthy form of exercise and outdoor recreation and transportation for local residents. But additionally, um. And they also really care about the places that they visit. And so it's the ideal group that we should be targeting. Um, just to remind you, the, the most recent economic development data shows cycling is. Being driven by increased family outdoor recreation and sports enthusiasts alike. Cycling equipment alone, uh, grew about fifteen percent to eight point five billion in the, the twelve months ending. July twenty twenty-one. And so the Outdoor Industry Association, their latest study, which was released in two thousand seventeen. Found that bicycling participants spend eighty-three billion on trip-related sales, that's bicycle tourism. And generate. Billion in retail spending. And so, you know, for our community, it just seems like this would be a great opportunity and I just hope that. The township board sees that as well and that we can work together on this and, and make this, uh, available to. Again, not only residents, but also people who are interested in visiting this, the area. But it, you know, um, if they can't cycle safely, they'll go someplace else, so. Um, work on this together.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Wolf, and, uh, congratulations on your appointment as executive director of Tip of the Mist. Yes. Well, it's always a pleasure seeing you, even if we can't always hear you. I, I think we, I think we got the gist. But, uh, your, your continued, uh, passion for improvement of this, uh, community is, is noted. Uh, with that being stated, is there any other, uh, online participants with public comment? Seeing none, uh, any further discussion, uh, for the good of the order?
Um, we were talking about, I, I know there was something about a, a, a study that we're doing right now about the water. Thing to connect the, uh, to connect the Partridge Points and create it, stop it dead. Is part of that going to run down that same territory, uh, along US twenty-three or is that all gonna be?
On South Partridge Point.
All gonna be from south to north?
Uh, east to west. Technically.
Well, whatever, the roads are southeast, north and south, so don't give me that.
If we want to grab a compass.
It's not going down the twenty-three right away then.
No, 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 that, 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 that main extension's already there. Um, uh, that was a continuation, uh, in the late nineteen nineties, early two thousands with our twenty-three south expansion.
So that's not one that we gotta increase the size of.
Nope, uh, no, this is just a, a stopgap measure of a continuation of non-existing main, uh, from. The dead ends at either end, which are east and west on South Partridge Point from the, on the west front from that dead end. To twenty-three south. And then on the eastern side of that dead end, uh, from, uh, that dead end, which is right at, basically at the Hirschburger residence. And the D N R property for bird watching parking lot eastward, uh, to the point, so that is, uh, Partridge Point as a whole is a loop. Uh, part of our system without that end, but no disruption to or increase of capacity to the main on the twenty-three south corner. Any further conver- discussion? By the board? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there support?
Or.
It's been moved and supported. Any further conversation or discussion? Seeing none, uh, uh, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose the same. Meeting adjourned at seven forty. Thank you all for your participation.